I will call the Board of Selectmen September ninth, 2024, meeting to order. And as a reminder, this meeting is being broadcast and recorded. Thank you, everybody, for joining us. I'm going to go straight to the town administrator's report.
Thank you. The first item on my report has to do with organizing the chief of police search process. Couple of things that I recommend at this point would be further review of the job description, which we have time on this, so if you don't have specific comments now, maybe you can work on that for a future meeting. Also, whether or not you have any additional questions that you'd like to ask of the applicants that get interviewed. And again, since the process is not even going to kick off until after the Fall Town Meeting in November, there's time on both of these. I don't know if anyone has anything to add at this point.
I don't have anything to add at this point.
I think we still have time, and I'm still working on the job description myself, kind of reviewing it, so we'll continue to talk about that for the next couple of meetings.
Sounds good.
With respect to the dredging project, there ended up being a third bidder, Atlantic Coast Tug and Marine, with a bid of $2,284,000, which is certainly well under the government independent estimate. Presently, we are waiting for the Army Corps to fully vet that bid and then announce the award, which I don't think has happened yet, and eventually issue a notice to proceed. Our understanding is they'd like the contractor to begin in October. Selectman Fitton and I will be attending a meeting in the morning that's coordinated by Senator Tar's office, just to go over what we know to date. I know that the three private marinas are in conversation right now with this apparent low bidder, so that they can possibly get some kind of arrangement with this contractor to do the work on their private property while the contractor is mobilized to do the government work.
Brendan, to refresh my memory, what was the government estimate that they've got funding for?
The independent government estimate, I can find that for you. I believe it was just over four million.
Four million, yeah. That's what I saw.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, because the one that came in first was, or second, was the, just under four.
Three, two, or something, thirty-seven.
Yeah, I have it here.
That's okay. I was wondering if it was four, around four.
No, actually, sorry.
It's 3.7.
3.772 was the independent government estimate.
4.4 was the allotted.
And the four was the land remediation ink, where they were the highest bidder.
Oh, okay.
Coastline was 2.7 million, and the 2.284 is what they're going with, but it's still well under the 3.772.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know if you have any other questions about the dredging. We're going to get more information tomorrow, for sure. The next item has to do with some traffic control measures and speeding control measures that different residents had asked if the town could consider. One of the areas of roadway is part of Route 133 that's controlled by Mass DOT, and the other area is near the junction of Route 133 and Grove Street along a stretch of roadway part of 133 that is actually controlled by the town. There's a short stretch of the roadway that's controlled by the town. With respect to that Grove Street intersection, I've passed all of this on to the Board of Public Works as road commissioners, and it would be up to them to determine if they wanted to go through the process of trying to make some traffic calming measures or speed limit reductions in that area. With respect to the portion that's under DOT control, it really comes down to whether or not the Board of Selectmen wants to request the DOT to take a look at the issue. And if they're going to do that, the DOT said that they would appreciate some substantiation of why it's necessary to go from 40 miles an hour to 30 miles an hour for a stretch of roadway, because right now, when you come into Essex from Gloucester, it's 35. It doesn't go down to 30, I'm sorry, it's 40 for a short distance, then 35. It doesn't go down to 30 until that.
It's a very short distance.
Very short distance.
I want to say less than a half a mile.
It's only hundreds of feet.
Oh, okay, so really...
And then it hits 35, and then you also see 35 on the flashing sign. And then you start to come around the corner by Vita Bella, and I think the sign is down right now because of the sidewalk work, but there's a 30 mile per hour zone that starts there. And so the person who's making the suggestion is asking it to go to 30 right at the town line, so the 40, the small stretch of 40, and then the stretch of 35 would be eliminated. But in order to substantiate that to DOT, you'd need to have some reasons why you think it would be necessary, because they don't want you to just ask them to look at it, they want your input and opinion. So I could go back to the resident and say, could you come up with, you know, some written...
How long is it of extending the 30, another half mile, mile?
It's certainly not a mile. It's probably between a quarter and a half.
Quarter and a half mile to go from, yeah, to the town line.
To go from 35 down to 30.
No, I mean from the 30, and that would be extended to the town line. How far is that?
Oh, yeah, probably a half mile.
Half mile, yeah.
A mile tops.
Tops, but I don't even think so. So do you want me to get back to that resident and say, hey, could you give the board a list, or are you not interested in pursuing it?
Could we, could we, I mean, because we know that the work that will have to be done, like a road study, because it's a state property, correct? So a road study in the...
Well, they would first tell you whether or not they thought it was a good candidate for a road study, so it might end there. If they think it is, then you really think, you need to think long and hard about whether you want them to do it.
So one, we would need why?
That's correct.
What would be the justification for us requesting a road study from the state?
For a half mile.
Well, requesting for them to even look at it without a road study, that's step one. So they want justification to come with that first request. Will you look at it and tell us whether you intend to pursue the next step? And so that needs to come with justification, because they're going to, if you just say, we want you to look at it, they're going to go on what grounds? We don't know the road. The local people know the road.
Can, I just want to comment, several different comments, but we also have Chief Francis in the room, so I might even put him on the spot and ask him. So several of my comments are, 133 is a state highway. Going lower than 35 could be problematic. The next thing is, we've heard in the past, including from the state, that when they do a study, we run the risk that we're going higher, which is why we took the position of ignoring the last study we did on Southern Ave.
And I'm wondering whether or not the construction is what's causing these questions, because I know that, like, if I go up to Canoma Point, yeah, it's a little dicey there. I hold my breath every time I go to take that lift, but it's because I know that the construction's going on, there's barrels, there's orange thingies.
I agree with that, and I also know that we have quite a few issues at 63, 65, Eastern Ave, which is at the Plaza, Boomtown, South Essex Village. That's the one area I know is very problematic, and I know we have speeding issues on Eastern Ave, but we have speeding issues all over town, and I think that everybody in town would love our speed limit to be lower. Chief, do you mind if I put you on the spot and ask you your feeling about lowering the speed limit to 30 miles an hour on 133?
To be perfectly honest with you, I don't personally see the need to lower that speed limit.
Okay.
It's not like we have major issues there. You're going to have speeding issues everywhere you go, but I don't think it's going to really resolve any issues to lower from 35 to 30 in that area.
And I do know that sometimes what I feel, if I go, like, to the mill, it's the big trucks that are trying to get up the hill that's right after that, that I know that I've gone, ooh, that's going pretty fast, but I know that also it's a big truck, and he's trying to get up a hill.
The other thing you want to think about, too, is when you come in from Gloucester, you're coming in at 40 miles an hour. To cut it right back down to 30 that quick, I personally believe we'll have some road rage incidents, we'll have people falling too close, there'll be a lot of that stuff. So you might slow people down, but the flip side is you might cause some other issues. That's just my opinion.
So we prefer a progressive transition to a lower speed limit into town.
And that's what's already there.
Then I think...
The recommendation that the expert, it is fine for me.
The recommendation from the expert is fine for me as well.
And speaking of recommendations, the third issue was, should we explore a townwide speed limit? And as you know, I've given you some information from the chief. It would probably lead to more problems than it solves.
Right. So I also received that email, and I agree. The recommendation from the expert is that we should not do it, so I think we move on. And it is on the agenda of the Board of the DPW Commissioners this evening to talk about the other speed limits, so I'm thinking we'll hear back on that another time. Thank you.
Next, I have the Fall Town Meeting topics. And at the next board meeting, I plan to have a preliminary version of the actual warrant available for the board to review. Things that I put in bold this time, up the top, purchase a new council on aging van, or purchase used or get service from Manchester. We're still waiting for the council itself to come back with what they want to really do there. I had something on there, consideration of possible sale of Essex portion of Old Essex Road. That was put on there when we thought perhaps the abutter to the bridge elimination project was interested in purchasing that, and they worked around that, so I just took that completely off. I've crossed it out on mine.
Is that the full direction now for that bridge, is doing what they're doing, the modification of the plan?
They want to daylight the stream, and they no longer have any interaction with that abutter.
Okay.
They've changed the design.
So that's all?
Yep.
But that piece of land will still be looking from our side, like a road going in, but it's going to be a dead end.
It's going to be a dead end. Yeah, we could put a dead end sign there. I don't even know that it's going to be plowed in the winter, because the state usually plowed that, not the town of Essex.
The state plowed Old Essex Road?
Because it's part of theirs, right there, yeah.
It really isn't, but I think it's just a...
Turnaround.
Abbott, yeah, turnaround, yeah, something like that.
Well, that's what I was thinking, because, I mean, in the wintertime, that business isn't even open, so...
It's just going to sit there.
Yeah.
Then we have, I have in bold, funding to replenish wage lines in the town clerk and the shellfish departments. That's because we're going through some transitions in those departments, and I'll have more information on the numbers as we get closer to town meeting. Mid-year cost in electric supply above that, increase in cost, and where I have a few down, make adjustments to the FY '25 operating budgets. All of those things are going to end up in the same article. Then we have the Fair Labor Standards Act exempt employee minimum. You know, we were looking, I started to look at some information on what other shellfish constables make, and it was very hard to get good comparables, because other towns are actually in the police department, or they're using a different model altogether. So, you know, it's something to continue to think about, and I think I shared that information with you.
But I think it's important to note that this email dated 8/29/24, that has the comps for the shellfish constable, was extremely interesting to see how other communities are running this, and I think now's not the time to talk about a merger, but at the point when our shellfish constable maybe is retiring, we know that that's probably going to remain a full-time job. We may want to consider a merger, because it may give us year-round benefit with two positions merging.
And I actually looked at what got me, made my brain go, ooh, so Gloucester? I just looked at Gloucesters and thought, they're a much bigger town. I'm assuming, and I could be totally wrong, that they have as many, if not more, clamors than we do?
Probably not.
Probably not.
Probably not, because they don't have the flats.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, that's where I was a little bit confused, so maybe it is my ignorance. Okay, thank you.
But also, Alva, look at what they're making. I mean, you're talking about, yes, it's hourly and not an annual salary, but they're also making $20,000 to $35,000 more annually than we're paying, based on an hourly basis and not salary, but yes, then we have benefits and pension.
They're doing it full-time.
Yeah.
Right, they're hourly.
That's, I mean, are they really paying $20,000 to $30,000 more? That's where I was kind of, you're not sure. I'm sorry, but can we go back to the council on aging vans? You're saying that you still need to discuss with our council on aging?
With our council on aging, because I've heard, hey, we need to purchase a used van, and they're talking with Manchester about that, but I've also heard, well, it would be better to just get money to have service from Manchester, or maybe some continued service from Opport.
Is Manchester in agreement with that? Is that just somebody thinking?
So far, there have been preliminary conversations between Tess, our director, and Nancy Hammond over there, the director of the Manchester Council on Aging, but I just sat with the chair of the Council on Aging today, and she still doesn't know where the council's going to come down on this. So it's on there so that we don't lose sight of it, but it's, I think it's likely that they're going to come up with some kind of proposal.
And Brendan and I also met with the town administrator in Manchester a couple of weeks ago for a different meeting, and he had a couple of different proposals of things that we could potentially, you know, work together on. The council on aging and the van issue was one, and we actually asked him to put together a little blurb or proposal on what he was thinking, so this van issue may come into play again with us.
Okay, but my question is, does Manchester, is Manchester willing to provide the service?
It sounds like they are, but they're trying to iron out what those details look like. Is it a van and a driver? Is it just the van? Is it the purchase of a van?
Yeah.
What does it look like? Those are all of the things in play.
And the cost to Essex versus, that would be my, getting those types of details, you know?
I was at the council on aging meeting last Tuesday, and they did not have anything definitive, other than a lot of ideas at that time.
Then, if you look, we have an article for some unpaid bills, that discussion about social security payments for a past employee where the withholdings were not proper, that's still being worked on, because the town meeting did already provide some of that money, but for the earlier years, we were with a different payroll company, and so the amount that the town meeting already came up with is only for the years since we've been with the new company, so that's why they're still working on that. The Chapter 90, Section 17(c), we've just heard, I'm crossing that out, we're not going to look at a townwide speed limit. Also on here is a state earmark to study Tobacco Lake, so there, I mean, a match to a state earmark. So we know that we're getting $20,000, probably be announced in October, that'll have to be spent by this coming June 30th. The Tobacco Lake Association would like to see whether the town would come up with a matching money. There, at this point, I met with them today, thinking that for their first phase of work, because they would like to do this over two years, they'd like to see $20,000 match to the $20,000 in state money. I know that the board is interested, though, that if we're going to start matching the state money, the town of Hamilton, where half the lake is, should be contacted. So I think between this meeting and your next meeting, with the lake association's help, we're going to reach out to Hamilton, and maybe it's $10,000 from each, and I think that's, you know, a fair way to deal with it. I think that was it on that page.
So the money for the lake association goes, comes to Essex, not to them? Comes to Essex, and we give it to them?
The money, okay, so the money from the state is coming to us, not to Hamilton.
Yeah.
And did Hamilton go after the same, like, I know it's one lake, but...
They don't get anything, yeah.
Could both towns go after the same grant or funding or whatever it is, and they're both getting, that's the only question I have.
Yeah, that's a lot, the line item comes to us. I don't think it goes...
It comes to us because we applied for it?
No.
No, we've been, we've been the most vocal working with the senator on this. Hamilton kind of lays low when it comes to the lake. They've closed their beach.
Yeah, I heard that.
And so, but we're like, okay, but it's still, in fact, the lake association's going to remind them, yeah, they're going to remind them, here's all the value on the lake that's in Hamilton, this is how much tax money's being generated off the lake, and they're going to see...
That may be the argument, is like, well, the money came to Essex, and you put it to the lake association, we didn't get anything.
But if you argue it that way, then I would argue back that the money comes to Essex, so Hamilton should fund the whole other half, because of the tax dollars they're getting.
If you look at what's happened, okay, in earmarks, we got 30, 30, seven and a half, and 20. That's coming up on $100,000 that Essex has helped to manage, and nothing from...
The whole lake.
Yes, the whole lake. So before I take your questions, there are things that I think are not going to appear on the warrant. Shellfish Constable Truck, I think we're going to do a pass down on that, right? So we don't need to have an article for it. Municipal Fuel Depot, is this something you see going forward in the fall, or are we going to do more research?
I personally feel more research is required, and the reason being is, if Ernie sells and is no longer in his business, do we have nobody to have to fuel our vehicles?
Nobody with diesel.
Nobody with diesel.
All the other, all the gas vehicles will still be okay, but not diesel vehicles.
And so, and then the diesel, we would, there is an option of having somebody come and deliver it, or no?
Correct, yes. There are fueling services.
But how often are you going to do that?
Well, that's the thing, I, you know, they like to...
And I'm just saying that we have to look at all options, because if you put a depot in, is that going to be any good? Is that going to cause us, and I'm just remembering from when Manchester put theirs in, and I was on the school committee, and there was lots of issues around it, and our buses started, but ended up not going there. It was, it was just crazy, so I'd like to make sure that we do due diligence.
I think that fuel depots have changed greatly over the last several years. They're a lot more, they're very strict, they're streamlined. Each car, every user has a specific, like, code that they use, it's all very well printed out. I think that you would not only do diesel, you would do gas, you get to get your fuel off the state bid, so it's cheaper for the town, you're not leaving town, you have to think about weather emergencies, now you're having your emergency vehicles leave town in the middle of snowstorms to go to another town to get there.
Where would, where would they go?
They would have to go to Hamilton, where there's diesel in downtown Hamilton at, I don't know what that is, at the train station there?
Yeah, 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 right across.
Cumberland, it's Cumberland, so they have diesel. I'm sure there's other diesel, there's diesel in Gloucester, but you're leaving the town during a potential emergency to go get your diesel.
And you're wasting fuel to get there and back.
And back. And you're also, there's a potential liability of somebody going off the road, because now you're going to get your fuel in another community. So I think the fuel depot is extremely important, it's been mentioned for years now.
It has.
If we don't want to go for it for fall, I understand, but I don't think we should put it that far down the list. I think that you're going to get pushed back from the departments.
It's the cost.
A lot of money.
First of all, I think you need a design, right?
Yes.
You need an engineer to design it, because it's...
You need to be able to have the cars, trucks, vehicles pull in and get it, so it's got to be in a location that's convenient.
Plus, it's specific to that site, yeah.
Yeah, it's above ground.
Would somebody complain if we have it over at the DPW at Centennial, because it's so close to, you know, like, those are the types...
I can tell you, they can't store that.
They can't store it that close to the water.
That's what I was thinking.
Right, no, it has to be at the transfer station. But, so maybe this funding, instead of a fuel depot, maybe it should be funding for design.
Get a price for a design. I can, I can get a price for a design, and you can consider that.
That won't be that expensive.
Find somebody that does it all the time. All right, so let me...
So we'll do that?
We'll do that, yeah.
All right.
And that'll be a design specific to Essex vehicles that would be using it.
Yes.
Yeah. Then the next one down, funding for a study of the three major town-owned bridges. I have to get back with Mike Galley on that, because I think that came from him. Also, I would like to do a refresh of about, a little bit more than two dozen of the small computer boxes that we use to connect back to Danvers. That would be around $7,000. Now, I could wait on this, because there is an IT grant that's coming out in January, the ability to apply for it is in January, and so although I don't really want to go, if we don't get the grant, now we're talking May, but I think it's worth a try.
Yeah.
My other question about the IT grant, though, what else could it be used for? Do we have any, could it be used for a refresh of a server, or is there any other old technology that we could use the grant for, so we don't miss the opportunity, but that we get you the boxes?
Buggle other things in it, yeah.
Well, no, what I'm thinking is, why don't we, for $7,000, I would rather not wait on when it comes to our technology and communicating with Danvers. If we go down, we have a real problem. It's kind of short money, even though it's $7,000. I'd rather see that be done at fall, if we can use the grant money for something else. Is there other IT things we could use it for, or would that...
Right now, our fiber is completely built out. We don't run servers here anymore. There's, there's one server that's coming up on end of life, but it's like a, it's like a $4,000 server.
Okay.
We could go with that, I mean...
Which would be more competitive, a new server?
Probably, since we're being very innovative in the way we connect to Danvers, more competitive would be the small, I mean, the ones we have are working, but it's time to get to the next level, and I'm just looking at the grant versus...
So you don't feel, and you're not concerned about waiting, though, till annual town meeting?
I don't really want to let it go that long, that's the thing.
So then we should put it on fall. Our IT person's saying we don't want to let it go that long. That says to me, we need to put it on fall.
Yeah.
I mean, it's...
Just some concerns.
It's not that much money per user. We're talking about, like, two dozen things for $7,000.
I think it should go on Fall Town Meeting.
Okay.
All right. So there's that. Okay, what questions and comments do you have?
I have no real questions or comments at this time. I think we're going to continue to see this for another meeting or two before we really have to finalize, and I know that we're on the annual town meeting, we're waiting to hear back from Canoma Point Association, so even though it's in bold, we're going to still wait on that.
Okay.
I have nothing.
The special legislation or adoption of new local option statute cap property taxes, is that the special legislation that the legislature is...
Well, yeah, well, that's what we had queued up for town meeting, but there were too many questions.
Yeah.
And so the thought was to try it again at the next annual town meeting, and that's why it's on there.
Yeah.
And we got some very specific information as to a couple of ways you could set it up, so it's on there. I didn't, I didn't think we were going to try it in the fall because of the zoning stuff.
Yeah, probably not.
So right now, we're already at, if we, if all of these go in, and we're talking like 26.
Something like that, yeah.
And what I'm not seeing is, and maybe I'm missing it, school funding?
That was in somewhere, wasn't it?
I see capital stabilization.
For what aspect? We already funded the...
The feasibility study.
Feasibility study.
We don't look at for funding for the school for probably another two years.
Okay, I thought we, in the past on Fall Meeting, has put money into the school fund.
Oh, okay, we did create a fund like that, so that if there was ever a really high year for Essex, you would have this school stabilization fund. Then it was determined... It was determined, at one point, since the rule used to be that it took two-thirds vote to get money out of that fund, that it wasn't very useful, because it would probably not come to fruition. Then there was a change in the rules that says you could potentially get that money out at, with a majority vote, but the discussion at the time was, it's better to just work with the school district to keep the thing down in the first place and not put money away. Right now, there's $50,000 in there, it's all that ever went in there.
Okay, I really, I know in the past, I've been asked, are they going to put that on there?
So it still exists, and there is a thing that I think Peter just pointed out, we have about a dozen special stabilization funds, okay? Do you see that one? And it says, I think I listed them all out.
Yeah, the 12 special purpose stabilization funds.
It's one of those, okay? And you see that there's a school apportionment fund? You see that? So what we do is, we have an article on that, but you work with the finance committee to determine of the dozen that we have, which ones are going to get money this year. So it's still an open question, Alva.
Okay.
And it will be available on the warrant if you and the finance committee decide you want to put money into that. The CADA bus route update, the board wanted me to reach out to see if there was an alternative to using side streets like Winthrop Street, and to ask about how CADA made this bus route[1730.41] CADA made this bus route, um, known to people. They've used social media, the CADA site, Gloucester Daily Times, printed material on buses, and word of mouth. With respect to, um, changing the route, the recommendation from the director of CADA, the administrator, is to simply go from Main Street, travel down Martin to its junction with Western Ave, take a right, come around on Western, hit, uh, Main Street again, and then go back out of town. And that way, the whole route is still on Main Streets.
I think that's a great suggestion. I think it solves the problem of side streets.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, so...
And I did reach out because as far as like, to me, um, this, the social media, you know, Gloucester Times, blah, 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 that's still all internal. And that isn't helping to bring in more tourists. It's not helping to bring in. So I did talk to the, one of the cha, um, Essex Chamber members, and they said, but that wasn't what it was for. It was, it was designed for the seniors, which, okay, that's...
And maybe workers or something like that, but, or to get shopping, you know, because you can connect, but...
So, um, so that was good to hear, but bad to hear because that seems like a lot of work when we only have one or two people on the bus. Um, and then I did want to ask whether or not there's been any downside since they started coming in, say, police activity or anything that we should be concerned about?
Well, I would ask that to the chief.
Chief, can you answer if there's been any issues with the CADA bus being in town since the CADA bus has started its route?
Nothing major. We just had, uh, one or two issues with, um, the CADA bus, but this CADA bus would be going down there anyway to Lufkin Point Road, dropping someone off every once in a while because it's narrow. When they get down and drop people off, if they don't pull over to the side enough, people can't, the rest of the people can't get by. So we have had an issue with that. I don't know if it's, I don't know if it would change if we didn't have the CADA bus coming into town, because I think this may have been a different scenario, maybe a disabled person type situation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, that's, that's all I had in my report.
Great. Thank you so much. So moving over to other business, I will entertain a motion to approve the weekly warrant, the amount of $392,862.49.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the selectmen's August 26, 2024, open meeting.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to appoint Mary Heaney to the Council on Aging for a partial term of three years, ending 6/30/25.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to accept a donation to the police gift account in the amount of $1,533 from the Canomo Point Association.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And just a shout out to the Canomo Point Association. They held a first-ever bingo blitz for public safety. And all of the money that was raised, it was a fundraiser, all the money that was raised was a four-way split. It was donated to the Essex Police Department, Fire Department, Harbor Master Department, and the Essex Bay Sailing Club. So it was a very successful event. It was really fun, and what a nice gesture on their part, so. We received some feedback from the town clerk's office that some senior citizens are foregoing the purchase of resident parking sticker due to cost, if you can...
Yes, and I don't think it's a very high number of people, but the, um, temporary town clerk, who as of today is back to the assistant town clerk, saw some people come in, uh, that mentioned, oh, don't bother, I can't, I can't afford that. If you remember, I believe we were at $5 before the change came to 20. We were $5 for a nonsenior and $1 for a senior. When the board changed the rule, they said it should just be $20 for everyone. So, you know, it's, again, I don't think it's large numbers of people, but it was a comment received, and she took, brought it to my attention, so I said that I would let the board know about it.
I guess I would ask, is there any sort of an opportunity for the board of selectmen to take a particular situation on a case-by-case basis and make an exception if somebody could come to us privately and send an email to you as the town administrator and say, this is a true hardship?
Yeah, with the change in regs, because right now, the regs say that exceptions can be made depending on whether people can substantiate their residency.
Right.
It does not say, or if there's another type of hardship.
Okay, and if we, think if we add that, I, I'm okay with doing, um, I don't think it should be across the board because there's plenty of seniors who can afford it.
Right.
I wonder if we open it up, though, to lots of people wanting to get exempt.
What's the age? Because I...
65.
Oh, damn.
It's at 65.
I'm just not old enough.
I think that we have enough between public safety, police department, fire department, and council on aging. I think we have enough people...
And it's a small amount.
In the know to substantiate whether they think it's a hardship. I don't...
I could bring her, it's up to you.
No, I, I, I was just bringing that up, but it's a small amount of money for most people. They're not gonna bother.
Well, the other thing that I could consider, I could speak with the chair of the council on aging, and maybe she could speak with the friends, and maybe they have an opportunity for the friends of the council on aging to do some donating of, if they know a senior has a hardship, maybe the friends could donate a parking sticker. So maybe that's the way to go.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's explore that.
I think that's a great idea.
Uh, I do have a couple of items not anticipated. We have a probationary firefighter that the fire department would like to get started, and they really don't have the luxury of waiting a couple of weeks. So I'd like to ask the board to appoint this probationary firefighter, subject to, um, the drug and medical screening and the core check, and it can be put on the agenda for ratification at your next meeting. The name of the individual here is Nicholas Molinari.
Any concerns with that? Nope?
No.
I will entertain a motion to appoint Nicholas Molinari as probationary fighter, contingent upon him passing drug, medical screening, and a core check.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's sign that now, and we'll hold it until it's ready. Then I wanted to let you know, you're probably familiar with the event known as Ales Over ALS, which has been happening down at The Grove. Nathan Woodman runs that, and he would like to explore the use of the new pavilion on November 2nd. I've explained to him, and I haven't heard back, there's no electricity at the new pavilion yet, and I don't know whether the board is comfortable opening that up before the town even necessarily has a ribbon cutting. So...
Or that it's, um, you know, completely sound. You know, we, what condition we'll be in, we don't know.
Roof is done.
Yeah, the roof is done, but then nothing...
And I'm trying to remember, what's the times, what's the time lim, time element that they use? Is it 12 to 4? Is it...
No, it's an, it's a, they probably start setting up around noon, but it's an all-night thing. They usually don't end until 10:00 PM. I mean, I think the fire department does the detail from 1:00 to 9:00 roughly or something. They, um, I guess my concern is this. I, I love the idea, but we already told people in the beginning of the season that we were not gonna entertain the use of the pavilion or that area for 2024. That's number one. Number two, I caution us to stay in our lane when it comes to inspectional services things. They, we would need to have an occupancy permit from the building inspector and have, have that blessed before we decide that they should start using it. So I'm not comfortable taking a vote tonight on that.
I asked, have they, has, have they put up a tent? And I feel sad because I've never, I'm not a bad drinker, so I don't, haven't partaked in that.
Um, I don't believe it's a tent. They usually use the Grove House.
Correct.
Yeah, they use the cottage, so they go down to the Grove House. They have a nice fire pit. They usually have a ale, an ale truck, a switch ale truck. They use the cottage itself. They may have a little tent, but generally...
They bring in their own sanitation.
Yeah. It's very well-run, and I think the pavilion would be awesome, but I wouldn't be comfortable taking a vote until Bill blessed that, and I'm not...
We don't know when that's gonna happen. So I think I should tell him, more likely not, and that you should make plans...
Instead of the cottage?
Yeah, make plans to do that one, at least one more year.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, so that's fine. And the other thing that came up, this is just a quick thing. Um, behind the transfer station where it connects with 30 Apple Street is a bunch of very dense vegetation, brambles, briars, that is about 50 or 60 feet deep. And there's no stone wall. It ends there. And the DPW would like to, so they have a way, emergency weigh-in, would like to cut a path through that vegetation. It is not in a wetlands buffer zone. Cut a path through that vegetation and leave it. They're gonna put rocks there so no one can get back in, because in an emergency, they could move the rocks aside, and they'd still have a way to get in and out. What they're saying is, since we own the property, we might as well be prepared, because if we had an emergency now, they'd have to grind through all this thicket. So it's not really a decision for the board. It's, it's just something that we're, where we wouldn't want them to do it, and then you find out later. They're not doing anything to them.
This is access from...
Between Apples...
Apple Street and the dump.
Back of the transfer station.
Yeah, yeah.
It's more of, can we cut this stuff?
Right, they're looking to brush hog.
Yeah.
Some bull briar.
A pathway.
Yeah.
Twenty-foot wide.
I know, but I got yelled at last week.
That's gonna happen.
From a butter who is very upset and doesn't feel we should be opening access between there. And, and I said, I think it's gonna happen. I'm not sure when, so...
What they want to do, you do not need a permit, and it is not in a wetland zone.
And let's consider the well-being of an entire town if we have an emergency and not one resident on Apple Street, or just the residents of Apple Street. So I think it's great that they're gonna brush hog it and have access. That's one of the reasons we actually bought the property.
Now, do you feel strongly that you want to bring this back on a posted agenda, or... I don't know, because there...
I think it should be on a posted agenda. And just so that we can say, yes, it's done. I, I mean, whether it's done this week or it's done in two weeks from now, does it really matter?
Sure.
I'd like to make sure that the public is aware, and if somebody has some reason why it can't be, they can bring it up.
Sure.
And not us doing it as an added agenda item, and then it's never been on the agenda.
Yeah, it's unanticipated, so sure, we can bring it back to the next meeting.
All right, I'll set that up. Those are the things I had. That's it.
So I'm gonna talk about licensing last. I'm gonna go to the reminder. We have, um, the next regular board of selectmen's meeting will take place on Monday, September 23rd, 2024, at 6:00 PM, third floor auditorium of the town hall, 30 Martin Street. And then...
I may miss that one again.
No worries.
I'm gonna be flying in. I should be in four-ish, but I'm not, you know how it goes.
That's fine, not a problem. So over to the licensing. Um, we do have two one-day wine and malt licenses. I wish that the applicant was in person this evening because I actually had questions on those, so I guess, not that it would be a reason for denial, it was more of, would it be a modification or kind of to ask a couple of questions. So we have Kim Saint-Ange, the owner of Guggins' Galley, looking to do two one-day wine and malts. The first one is on Wednesday, October 9th, 2024, between the hours of 12:00 PM and 9:00 PM. Second one, November 13th, between the hours of 12:00 PM and 9:00 PM. And it's already been posted on Facebook that the October 9th event is actually from 5:30 to 8:30. So my question was gonna be, why are we, you know, requesting a nine-hour window when the event, from what I can see on Facebook, appears to be a three-hour event? Um, that was my first question. And then I guess my second thing was more just of a, kind of a question about the fact that it's not been approved, yet it's been posted on Facebook. And that really puts the board of selectmen in a bad position, because should there be enough cause for concern that we were in a position to have to deny it and go to a hearing and things like that? You're shining bad light on us as not being business-friendly when really it's not been approved, yet it's already been published and advertised. So little problematic.
That's a message to be sent.
I think so. I think that, you know, I, does the board have any, I, I will also say, Guggins has done these Guggins after-hours. They've been successful. We've had no complaints. They've not been problematic. The biggest issues that have been raised about these events is parking and the lack thereof. Um, but we haven't heard anything from the police department that they were parking concerns, other than the normal parking issues in town. So I don't see any reason why, and prior to the meeting, I did meet with town administrator Zubraki about whether or not these were, um, because the business was open and operational during these times, should it be appropriate? And it is appropriate. So those concerns have been asked and answered. So I don't really see any reason not to approve these. I guess I would just suggest to the applicant that they be present, and certainly at 6:00 I would have got them in and out of here quickly and been able to ask these things. So...
Well, how about this? You could vote that it's the board's preference for the applicant to amend its application to shorten the hours if that's possible, but otherwise you'll allow it. That way, you're telling the applicant that you still had a request of, from them, uh, for them, to, um, bring the hours of licensure more in line with the hours of the event. You could, you could include that as...
If we didn't know the Facebook event was posted, and they gave us this request for 12:00, we would just, we would just approve it, right?
Right, I would have still asked the same question, though, because it is a Wednesday afternoon, and I would have still asked the question of, should they be serving alcohol during the business hours that they're open in their establishment? But because it's not a licensed alcohol-serving facility, it is still considered a special event, and they can do that, so.
Yeah, there's no limitation on the time length. It's no different than...
And Facebook may be wrong. It could change again, you know, or whatever. They might still be trying to figure it out.
And you can postpone until the next meeting on the 23rd.
And still be within...
You're within your, within your, you're within your review window legally. So it wouldn't be a denial, it would be a tabling.
So how does the board...
I don't mind voting for it now, but to just make it clear, maybe to the Chamber of Commerce, maybe to the individual, um, owner, that you need to put in what you're gonna do, you know, and not extend it out in your concerns, you know?
So, Alva, how do you feel? Do you want to tell the applicant it would be our preference to narrow it to the time that they're holding the event?
No, because if we didn't know, I mean, Facebook is a social media, and if none of us were on social media, we never even would see this smaller event. We would, we would be looking at going, okay, so they're doing a Wednesday from 12:00 to 9:00. Well, that's odd. It's a Wednesday, but okay. I mean, she doesn't have to start at 12:00. She may...
Right, there's nothing prohibiting you from, from approving this, but if you don't like the fact that this nine-hour duration, that seems too much for basically a retail store, then, you know, you could ask questions in that regard.
Could end up being nine hours.
So the, the concern that I would have is the fact that if it is a Wednesday, the post office is open longer, which means you can't park in the post office. You can't park in the bank.
But you can park behind.
Yeah, but people are gonna park in both of those places.
Well, not if they're open. No, they won't. Well, somebody will, but not really.
Yeah, they do. I see them. Um, but, and anyways, at the face value, my feeling is, this is what we were requested. I don't see a reason. She's done two others, or three others.
Yeah, your reason would be, I think that's too much time, and, but if you don't feel that way, then there's nothing preventing you from approving it.
Yeah. I don't mind.
Yeah, I, I don't mind either approving it as is, um, but then we'd have to have a hearing if indeed on the, if the 9th of October, there's problems with too many, you know, too many issues.
I could also, you could approve it, and I could also just reach out to the proprietor and say, hey, we noticed this. Is there a way to sync it up better in the future?
Sure.
And get you more information. But it's up to you whether you want to approve it tonight or wait for that information.
I'm willing to approve.
I'm willing to approve.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve the two one-day wine and malt licenses as listed on the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, go ahead, Alva.
I'll let you go since you're the chief.
No, I was simply gonna say that we have executive session at 6:45, and even though we're at 6:47, I'm gonna take public comment before we move into executive session, because we're only gonna be coming back into regular session for a journey. So I apologize for the delay to executive session, but we are gonna take another couple of minutes for comment before we move in. So ask me your question.
All I would like to do is give kudos to the police department on such a great job this weekend. Um, I was very impressed with the number of cars and the number of people, so congratulations.
Yes, and...
She's excellent.
My apologies for not being there. I was looking forward to it all year, and I could not wait. And I had a personal reason to not be there. Um, but I have to tell you that everyone that texted me pictures and said it was awesome. So I'm sad I missed it, but...
Sad I missed it too.
But the pictures were awesome, and thank you for having it. So yes, Alva, thank you so much. Um, I'm gonna move into public comment. We don't have anybody in the room with us this evening for public comment. If there's anybody online that would like to make public comment, please unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record, and do so at this time. Okay, not seeing anybody unmuting for public comment, I'm gonna ask town administrator Zubraki to bring us into executive session.
So I'm gonna recommend that the board move into executive session for two separate purposes. The first, uh, consideration would be what's known as purpose two under the open meeting law, to discuss strategy in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. I'm gonna recommend there that, um, the chief of police be invited into that session, uh, and that the chair declare that an open discussion of the matter would be detrimental to the board's negotiating position. And then after that, that the board will, um, move into, uh, another segment of the executive session for purpose one under the open meeting law, which is to discuss the reputation, character, physical for purpose one under the open meeting law, which is to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual or discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaints, charges brought against a public officer, staff member or individual. Mentioning that the first issue that I brought up, it does involve a police officer. And that the chairman also declare that the, um, the board will not be returning to open session this evening except to adjourn the meeting.
So I will entertain a motion to move into executive session by roll call vote.
Peter Flippin, aye.
Alvin Gaharo, aye.
Ruth Perrine, aye. And Joan, if you could go to fade to black. Thank you. Thank you, Joan. Uh, the board voted by roll call vote to come out of executive session and back into regular session and being 7:35 PM, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Joan, have a great night.